Okay, so I will call the meeting of the BORNE Select Board for Tuesday, February 13th, 2024 to order. Note, this meeting is being recorded. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge it at this time. Use of flash photography during BORNE meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, oh. Did I ask here? Is anyone recording? Do they need to acknowledge it at this time? We are recording.
Michael Brown from the BORNE Enterprise.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the conference line 1-929-205-6099. The Zoom meeting ID is 869-5775-5505. The password is BORNE. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. Calling the public session into open session, we will have a moment of silence to recognize our troops and our public safety personnel. Next, we'll have the salute to the flag. I'm not sure we have our flag here, but we can just say it. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Reading of the Select Board Vision and Mission Statements. Would someone like to read?
I can do both of them if you'd like, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Jared.
BORNE is a proud community that embraces change while respecting the rich heritage of the town and its villages. It is a municipality based on strong fiscal government with a durable economy that recognizes the rights of all citizens, respects the environment, especially the coastal areas of the community and the amenities that it affords. BORNE embraces excellent education and offers to citizens a healthy, active lifestyle. Mission: BORNE will maximize opportunities for social and economic development while retaining an attractive, sustainable, and secure coastline and environment for the enjoyment of residents and visitors through responsible and professional leadership. And in partnership with others, BORNE will strive to improve the quality of life for all residents living and working in the larger community.
Thank you. Next is public comment on non-agenda items. Public comments are allowed for up to 12 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes for comment. The board is not able to respond due to open meeting laws. Is there anyone here for public comment on non-agenda items? Please raise your hand or speak to let me know. Seeing none, we will continue. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Class II Car Dealer License Public Hearing for Class II Used Car License Application for 74 Cranberry Highway in Sagamore. Is there someone here from RZND Motors Corporation? Who's the applicant here? Is Ayara here? I think, or Ayara was here. You want to unmute yourself, Ayara?
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Sorry, I have a little bit of computer issue with the whole storm.
Okay. Marlene, could you like talk about this application? Do we have any concerns about it, or is it all good?
Everything is in order. We do not have any concerns.
Okay, I just have one question because one of the things said that the 74 Cranberry Highway, BORNE 02532, but it's actually Sagamore, 0256, 02561, is that okay? I mean, it's all BORNE, so sometimes it's just listed that way. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, the one is the mailing address is different.
Okay. And the other question I had was on our packet of page 15 of 133. There was a 2017 map that said they needed an agreement letter for access easement to exit not through the car wash. Is that all set? Are we all good with that? I'm sure the...
The applicant should answer that.
Okay.
Yes, that should be all set.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, Jared.
I think that driveway issue was resolved quite some time ago.
Yeah, I mean, it was originally 2017, so that was an old plan, so that sounds fine. Thank you. Any questions from the public? Okay. Looking for a motion to approve the Class II Car Dealer License for RZND Motors Corp. at 74 Cranberry Highway, Sagamore, Mass. 02561.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jared, second by Anne Marie. Is there any further discussion? This needs to be a roll call vote due to Zoom, so I'll start with Jared.
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Okay. Melissa?
Yes.
And MJ votes yes. So it's unanimous, 5-0-0. Thank you. And I have to tell you, she's still here, Ayara, maybe she lost. So I have to tell you that I saw the pictures of yourself or a location, and I used to live near there, so welcome to board.
Thank you so much. We're truly appreciated. And you know, we feel very welcome by Sagamore itself.
All right, great. So thank you for the business.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is Ryan's Amusement Change in Manager. Yes. Okay, hi Pamela, welcome.
Hi.
Hi. Marlene, is there any issues with this application?
There is not.
Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none. All right, so we are looking for a motion to approve the change in manager for Ryan Family Amusements, 200 Main Street, BORNE, Massachusetts.
So moved.
To Pamela, yes, see, no. So motion by, I think there was a motion by Anne Marie, maybe, and a Peter, but a second by Peter. Is that about correct?
That's correct.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none, it's roll call vote. Jared?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Melissa?
I lost you for about 30 seconds, but I heard Marlene say things were great, so yeah.
Thank you. And MJ votes yes. So it is approved unanimously, 5-0-0. And congratulations as the new manager. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all right then. Next item is Discussion with DPW Additional Chapter 90 Funding for Academy and Maine. Is this going to be Matt, or are you going to introduce Marlene?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Matt Sawicki and Tim Leiden are both here to talk about how the project is progressing and why we think it's advisable to use some additional funds to make sure we end up with a high product at the end of the day that will make people happy. So I'm going to turn it over to Matt.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. So Tim and I have been working on the Academy Drive and Main Street intersection since I started back in November. As the projects moved on, there's been some cost increases to the basic scale of the project. But what we'd like to do is utilize chapter funding to make sure that the project is everything that was originally proposed in the beginning. So for instance, as a cost-saving measure, the decorative pavement that was in the middle of the project would be taken out of the base scope as a cost-saving measure. So we'd like to add that back in. Also, when the, as the project was being designed, there were some drainage issues that came to be with the way the curbing was coming out the road. It was going to create some drainage issues. So we'd like to use Chapter 90 money to fix those drainage issues. Also, I know there's, from what I understand, there's been talk of doing decorative street lighting on Main Street as a future project. At this time, we think it makes sense to put the handholds and the light posts, not the light posts, but the light bases in so that we don't go back and disrupt those, the sidewalk in the future. And the last thing that we wanted to do is another cost-saving measure for the project was to eliminate the brick inlays that currently run on the north side of Main Street. The way the base scope is now, those brick inlays would not be placed on the sidewalk. And we think to keep with the aesthetics of the way Main Street is now, it makes sense to add those inlays at this time. So what we'd like to do was, with your approval, to utilize Chapter 90 funding. We have an estimate of $188,000 to do those changes. So we would like to hear your thoughts on that. If you guys have any other questions.
Thank you. Can you, can you tell us what the supplemental, Chapter 90 money, or like what our available Chapter 90 money is, or what our supplemental is? I mean, what do we have for Chapter 90, though?
Yeah, so we currently have $1,854,292.28 available in Chapter 90 funding.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think this sounds great. Are there any questions from the board? I'm really happy to hear that we do the preparation for the lighting because I think that's really important and that we definitely want to have that. So I see Jared and Peter have, so their hands up, so we'll start with Jared.
Yeah, so Matt and Tim, with your history on this, I just want to ask. So the brick inlays that we have, that's a large section of sidewalk that's going to be expanded a little bit. It may actually be able to be used for like some outdoor seating, cafe-type seating. Is it, is it a better thought process to not have the brick inlay at this point and maybe save that little small amount of cost and just have straight concrete? It also is an area that is going to be widely accessible to wheelchairs and such because that's a busy intersection. People cross there. I'm just trying to think a little bit, you know, around the whole encompassing process. You tell me what your thought process is, and I don't, I don't know where the brick inlay is going to be exactly, so you know, just a, just a thought, is that a, is that a cost-saving that might be worthwhile?
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
From, from my perspective, it was purely just an aesthetic look. It just seemed if we were to take that out, it would look different. And I don't know if the residents, if that, when that was put in, if the residents want to keep that in there. That was kind of my thought process on it. And if you look at the screen share, the inlays would just be a two-foot strip that would run along the edge of the curb.
Okay, I understand now. So I didn't know if it was going to be like square sections similar to by the bump outs for the crosswalks. They have like a square section. But if it's just going to run along the curbing, I think that's fine. Thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Peter, you're next.
Thank you. I want to thank you for doing the prep work for the lighting on the West End. It's, it's, it's very much needed, and I know it's not in the scope of this project right now. But in the summertime, it's just at night, especially Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We have a lot of traffic down there with the concerts and Mahonies and the other restaurants open, so anything we can do so we can get the West End lighting further along in prep work, I appreciate it because I would, eventually, when we're able to, I'd like to see us put the lights in permanently for safety reasons.
Thank you, Peter. Next, Anne Marie.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I agree with the, with the the lighting situation to prep now and not have to redig or disrupt, you know, what we've recently, you know, all the work that's been recently done is, is actually very, very cost-effective at this point in time. You know, and this, you know, we have to look at this. I mean, even if some of this is somewhat aesthetic, that end is sort of, you know, like the bridges are the gateway to the south side of the Cape. The, the, that piece is sort of the gateway into, into BORNE. If you're coming from, you know, Wareham or some of the other communities out that west way. So I think it's important that it look the best it possibly can. And it's becoming a very busy part of our community where people gather as well, so I agree with returning back the brick and to keep the, you know, we have it further down the road. There might be a gap in between where we don't have it, but just for that consistency, eventually, I think, you know, it captures aesthetically a beautiful spot on Main Street.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Are there any other questions or comments from the board?
I mean, I don't have to add too much, MJ, if I might. It just, you know, I agree. I think I'm a big, you know, supporter of curb appeal, and I think that isn't really, you know, a critical area when people are coming in. And, you know, I think it's a great job. Thank you for the work that's been done.
Thank you. Brian, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, just one question to the comment about avoiding any future digging the sidewalk after doing all this work. Is there a plan to put conduit down in this section to avoid any future need to dig up the area for telecom work anytime in the future?
Someone want to answer that question?
Yes, there is. Conduit is part of the change order. There'll be handholds and conduit installed.
These are excess space for, you know, how much excess space is going to be in there?
Right now, the conduit is for the, is for the public light poles. That is the conduit that we're designing for.
So is it going to be completely full with the wires to run it, or is there excess capacity being left in space in there?
I can't make any representations at this time about that.
So, may I?
So let me ask you a question. How is, so right now on Main Street, we have poles, right? Like, it's all electric poles and like everything that's cable or electric is, it's not underground. It's in, it's in the, it's on the poles, right?
Madam Chair, can I comment? And try and help out with Matt? I know Matt probably has something to add to this, but I can, I think I can clarify.
Yeah, go ahead, Jared.
So this, this is a conduit that's going to be laid in the sidewalk areas specifically for the lighting. This is not anything that's going to be accessible for internet, phone, power wires, or any of that sort of thing. Those are all already inlaid into the street. And actually, I do remember that Verizon has, and as well as Verizon has underground, as well as Comcast overhead. All of their wiring that runs down Main Street, Verizon, I mentioned because they specifically go to the building across from the Town Hall. So they have a large conduit runway going down Main Street. But this, this particular instance is not something that would be available or usable, since it's going to have electricity and it will not be available for phone or cable.
Thank you, Jared. Oh, Peter, do you still have your hand raised? Do you have another question? I think that's you.
Okay, now I can talk. Yes, I have one more question or maybe a suggestion. With the summer season fastly approaching, is there any way we can get some temporary lighting through the base for surplus equipment that we can use on the West End of Main Street on the busier nights? I know unfortunately, if we, those temporary lighting, the mechanisms alarm can be noisy, and that may be detrimental for the businesses in the area. But at the same time, if there is, if there is an option for temporary lighting this summer, I'm sure the residents and the the patrons of the businesses over there would greatly appreciate it because it does, it is unsafe at night coming out of the concert or coming out of those restaurants. So I'm just looking at any and all options to see if we can make it safer down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board or the public? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve $188,000 of Chapter 90 funds for the Main Street at Academy Drive intersection improvements?
So moved.
Motion to approve.
Have Peter do it, and I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Peter, second by Jared. Thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ votes yes, so it's unanimous, 5-0-0. I think this is a great project. Please, like, let's get that lighting piece of it for that West End of Main Street on the Capitol Plan ASAP.
I thank you for your support.
Thank you, Matt. Great presentation. Appreciate your very detailed and clear financial explanation of what we were doing. It was awesome, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along. Status update regarding ARPA projects and pilot project for Ball Field Maintenance Initiative.
Thank you. So Katie Matthews, the Recreation Director, Matt Sawicki, the DPW Director, Liz Hartsgrove, the Assistant Town Administrator, and I recently met with the Facility Subcommittee of the Recreation Committee along with representatives of BORNE Youth Baseball. And nobody wants to have another summer like we did last summer. We're unanimous in our, in our feedback that last summer was not, that we can do better and that we don't want to repeat the field conditions of last summer. Now, the issue I want to talk to you about right now, tonight, is over the course of a number of years, there has been a rather informal agreement between BORNE Youth Baseball and the town on the division of duties and who does what to maintain the baseball fields. And I'm talking about five locations in town. And Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's Pecasset, Monument Beach, Community Building, Keith Field, and Clark Field. Those are the five fields that are used for Little League. And over the years, BORNE Youth Baseball would provide a lot of in-kind labor in lieu of paying any fees for the use of those fields for their season. Obviously, things broke down last summer, and there has been a request made by many people, including the leadership at BORNE Youth Baseball, that the town of BORNE take on the field maintenance. And DPW is willing to do that. We've talked about the logistics and our capacity to handle those five fields and keep them in playable condition, and we feel confident that we can do so. The difficulty is that we don't have any historical cost data. We don't actually, I can't ask for money in the operating budget to take care of these fields because I don't know what we actually need. We've never, we haven't done it. So I don't know what our overtime costs will be. I don't know how much we would need to rely on contractors. I don't know how often BORNE Youth Baseball was applying herbicides and pesticides and fertilizers. So what I would like to do with, or what I'd like to talk to you about doing is that we use some of our remaining, remaining ARPA funds to essentially set up a pilot project for this upcoming season where DPW cover, DPW takes care of these five fields. Now, I know that other groups will be unhappy. Soccer, lacrosse, other users in town will be unhappy, but at this point, we feel that we have the capacity to, to take care of the baseball, these five baseball fields appropriately without overcommitting ourselves. And we're not at the point where we're comfortable saying we can take on all outdoor recreation facilities in a responsible manner. We discussed going to town meeting instead of using ARPA funds so that we could request funds through a free cash article. However, the difficulty is we would lose, with town meeting being on May 6th, we would lose the entire preseason. We would also lose the first two games of the season, so we would not be ready for opening day. As you know, ARPA funds have to be committed by December 31st of this year. And we've done a very good job of that. We've wrapped up almost all of our initiatives. The only one that's still ongoing is the low-pressure system upgrades for the sewer system. And Matt has been negotiating some scope changes with one of the bidders, and we hope to have that contract underway soon. But we feel that we can set us, we can still do that work, and we can set aside approximately $75,000. I'm not saying that it will take that much, but we don't know how much it will take right now. And we can set aside that amount of ARPA funds so we can start on this work prior to town meeting, and so we don't lose the preseason. So that's, that's our thinking in a nutshell. It is not a traditional solution. Obviously, the traditional solution would be to request funds through the operating budget. But without knowing what is actually needed, I would just be guessing. And given the stress we have, especially on this year on the operating budget, I'm not willing to do that. I also don't want to underestimate what we might need and then not be able to follow through with the whole season. So if, I know that was brief, but if there are any questions from the board members, Matt, Katie, and I are happy to try to answer them.
All right, thank you. Does the board have any questions about this concept? Anne Marie?
Thank you. So with respect, so, so BORNE Youth Baseball couldn't give you any idea of costs just alone in materials and what they've done to address the fields or maintain the fields?
So we asked, and... So, we asked and, and there, they really can't. There are not reliable numbers because so much of it is volunteer man-hours. And also, um, there are, as we all know, there are very generous businesses in town who would just do the work and not send the bill. So, we don't have those, we don't have those records from the previous years to rely on.
And the goal obviously would be to get this in the operating budget along, would, would the goal also be along with the other, you know, recreation areas to eventually be able to maintain them through, uh, as part of our operating budget?
Actually, thank you for asking that question because that was a major point that I wanted to bring up, and I forgot. Um, that piece is critical. So, at the end of the season, we need to collectively sit down and review what it does cost to keep these, to keep these and other fields in a usable condition. And then we, and then you, as a select board, need to decide how much of that cost do you want to put on the taxpayers as part of the operating budget? And how much of that cost do you need to put on the users and charge reasonable fees? Or do we mo, or, or do we memorialize a formal system of in-kind labor?
Thank you. Uh, Peter?
Uh, yes, um, I just think as part of the long-term capital budget, it's we should be looking to modernize and, and have a dedicated plan for athletic fields period. I mean, we go, I say we, but parents and family and supporters go to other communities when they see these two, these kids play. And the fields are in pristine shape. They have bathhouses, they have snap bars, they have um, hand, um, a first aid station. Um, I know, uh, you know, because of um, the passing and trying to make the budget sustainable, one of the things that was cut was athletic fields, but, you know, they guess, these kids are entitled to what, and they should have whatever the other community has, and I think it's part of doing our goals and our uh, doing our goals in the future and doing some long-term planning, we should sit down with the Recreation Committee and also see, and see, these other organizations and see what we can do to bring these fields up to the par with what they have in other communities because I've been stopped when I've gone over to a Promifan sandwich and they're like, born fields look horrendous. Do something about it. And I said, that's not for me. I said, that's something that needs to be discussed as a whole through the town administrator. And I just think that maybe as part of long-term capital planning, we should um, you know, see if that's, it's going to be a goal or priority. So, we should at least discuss it in the future to see what we can do long-term to bring these fields up to, up to par.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Comments? So, I, first of all, I want to say I um, I think it's really um, creative to think about the use of ARPA funds so that we can do the season, the, the preseason work that needs to be done for the baseball fields. I think that's a, that's a, a really creative way of thinking. Um, I think the it, it, the fall sports, you know, if lacrosse and soccer are fall sports, you know, maybe we need to do some thinking about if, whether if the seventy-five thousand will leave some money for that, what the condition of those fields are, or maybe think about some article of capital that would allow us to do some preseason maintenance on those fields as well to get our numbers. So, we know what we're talking about operationally. So, I think this is like a, the beginning of a really good plan. I mean, recreation has been talking about field maintenance and parks and recreation, you know, having a parks and recreation. What do we need? What's it gonna cost? And you, you know, if it's a, if it's a number in the budget, I think you, you're right, Marlene. We either have to ask uh, for the fees or come up with a formal way for having it done outside the budget. But we need to quantify what it is and what needs to be done so we can talk about the budget impact. So, um, I really like this idea. I think it's a good way of, of, of starting the process because it's not so much, I don't think, a capital thing. It's a, it's an operational thing. It's like, these are, we have maintenance things that have to be done on these fields every spring, every fall, every summer, and we need to know what those are and how we're gonna fund them in the operational budget. And so I think this is a really great first step and I really like the idea. So, um, Anne Marie and then Jordan.
Hi, Jordan. I'm just about ready to talk about you. Um, just wondering if you've tapped into the schools with respects to what things cost for field maintenance because they do a pretty amazing job with the, is Ricky still around, Jordan? Or do you find he retire?
He's still with us.
Yeah, um, and you know, in that, I, I, I'm sure that the schools can give you a, a pretty good idea cost-wise on, on maintenance for fields, perhaps. You know, that might be a conversation to have.
So, um, Matt and Katie are reaching out to Jordan's crew um, and to the schools because yes, we do realize that we have uh, other in-town resources who can help us.
Awesome. Did you have something else to say, Jordan, or was that it?
Well, no, I, I just thought this conversation was very timely, um, because, you know, we're looking at our fee structure as well. Um, you know, born, born youth soccer, born youth lacrosse, born youth basketball, um, all use our facilities. We do not charge a, a user fee to them. There was a comment about, um, you know, if you took on the cost for baseball, the people would, might be disgruntled, but it is something that we're looking at um, as we will, look to um, modernize our fee structure. So, we're, we're in the preliminary rounds of doing that research now. Um, I just thought it was timely, um, because I, I, I do want input from, from the youth sports um, and from, from everybody in town on what that, what that would look like.
That's awesome. All right. So, um, are there any other comments from the board or questions? Um, so are, um, are you looking for a motion, um, Marlene, to, uh, for the board to support the use of ARPA funds for the pilot project for Ball Field Maintenance Initiative?
Yes.
So, vote.
Motion by Jared. Second by, was that a second by Anne Marie? Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? Um, seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Everybody moves around, so the order of voting is different based on like, when you last talked. So, Anne Marie.
Yes.
Jared.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
And MJ votes yes. Um, so it's unanimous, and um, I thank you so much for this work. I, I think it's really um, combined with the other recreation discussion that we're having about fields, I think it's really timely and um, I really appreciate you all taking the initiative to get together and, and come up with a solution that could, might be part of a long-term plan. So, thank you very much. Okay, next is Born Community Boating Presentation. So, who do we have? And I see Paul Bucheff, but I think there's someone else who's gonna make the presentation for Born Community Boating. So, if you want to unmute yourself and introduce yourself, that would be awesome.
Hello. Um, so I'm Karina, and I'm the fairly new Executive Director for Born Community Boating, and we want to kind of a brief uh, presentation for you all to introduce you or refresh you for those that do know us, um, who we are, what we're doing. Um, and so if I could share my screen with you all, I do have um, a small presentation and I can kind of get the ball rolling, um, be able to answer any questions at the end. And we do have board members such as Paul and Ken and David O'Hara here, um, that would also be able to help answer any questions that you all might have. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen really quick.
So, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so as long as everybody can see this.
Hello. On behalf of BCB, we'd like to thank you for allowing us to present this evening, and we hope everyone is warm and safe at home today.
Is everybody able to hear?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
BCB has been operating in Bourne since two thousand and seven. We provide opportunities for people of all ages and abilities to access and enrich their lives through on-water experiences. Of special note, we are one of less than fifty community sailing programs in the US who are accredited by the US Sailing Organization. You can see here on the map that we are the only accredited program on Cape Cod. The majority of our efforts go towards running an eight-week summer sailing school for children approximately six years and older. This program runs out of Monument Beach. Class options run from one to four weeks in length, and students can take fuller half-day programs. Our core class offerings include the mummy chug classes for our youngest learners, then a series of classes starting from the through a learn-to-race class, allowing students to gain skills and confidence as they progress through each level. We have also always incorporated a marine biology and ocean science curriculum into the summer program with our belly biology program. In this class, students explore the marine habitat around Finney's Harbor, as well as take field trips or have visits by local experts. BCB also offers sailing lessons for adults and families of all ages and abilities. These are typically offered in the afternoon or evening and are taught by our experienced group of sailing instructors. Finally, BCB also offers year-round community education. This winter, we are offering a speaker series hosted at the Bridgeview Grill. John Wigglesworth gave a great talk about his trip to the North Pole for us in January, and we look forward to two more lectures, one by Finn Perry and then one by our very own Paul Bucheff. We are also hosting a family event at the Bourne High School, the Dragon King Puppet Show, which is an amazing performance of an under-the-sea adventure. To highlight some of the benefits BCB brings to the Bourne community in general, first, as for our students, they learn new skills and take pride in gaining confidence with each sailing or science accomplishment they make. And on a practical note, our summer sailing school provides a convenient, affordable, and fun daycare option for Bourne families during the summer school break. Then for some of our students, as they get older, they elect to enroll in our junior instructor training program with the goal of becoming a sailing instructor for their summer jobs. In addition, there isn't, there is even the possibility of the BCB program leading to full-time careers in the management of sailing programs or other nonprofit organizations. Highlighted here are two such BCB success stories, with Leah Cody taking on her head instructor position with this summer, and Karina Way is our Executive Director, both graduates of the BCB Sailing School. Next, we'll spend a moment on our business model. BCB is a nonprofit organization. Summer school tuitions typically cover half or less than half of our operating budget. We will rely on fundraising, donations, and volunteers to keep BCB running. Our paid staff consists of one full-time year-round Executive Director and four to five summer sailing instructors. Of note, all instructors are certified in CPR first aid and as USA Certified Level One Instructors or higher. Finally, BCB wants to thank the town of Bourne for your continued support. We couldn't do all of this without you. As far as the physical structures at Monument Beach, we would like to continue to have portable temporary storage to protect boats and equipment. We also look forward to working with the group developing plans for the future marine facility at Monument Beach.
Okay, and I just wanted to kind of prepare everybody. It might get loud. We have a little slideshow at the end just so while we're answering questions and things like that. Um, and I'll stop it if it's too loud, so just let me know.
We'll end here with these testimonials from our twenty-twenty-three season, as well as a few more summer photos. We have board members Ken Legg and Paul Bucheff, among others, who will say a few words at the end and answer any questions.
Paul, do you want to say anything?
Well, um, these, these, seeing these pictures remind me of something that uh, um, Tim Mullin, the former harbor master, when we moved to Monument Beach, said, he said, you know, we work so hard to provide boating for all the um, Bourne community, and there are lots of boats in the harbor, there are a lot of boats in the slips, but none of the boats ever go out, especially during the week. They just sit there. And he said, it, it's really great to see that every day there's thirty or forty young kids of Bourne outsailing, learning wonderful experiences about being, being self-confident and proud of what they're able to accomplish.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, I can't emphasize enough about how much the community has helped us over this last seventeen years. It really has been a community effort, and that's why we call, well, these programs are called community sailing, but you really, you really need the help, and you need it in a lot of different ways of, of keeping the fleet together, of organizing things, and especially in, in fundraising, because we, we run at a loss. US Sailing would like to see a program like ours get seventy-five percent of its uh, uh, expenses from tuition, and we just can't do that. Not, not in Bourne. Maybe you can do it in uh, um, Hyannis or someplace like that, but you can't do it in Bourne. So, we have to come up, you know, I'm chasing fifty, fifty K a year of donations and we, we seem to be able to do it, but we really need the help of the people in town, and they will always, they've always come through for us. So, the other thing I, I would mention is, I, I invite anybody to come down in the summer, um, especially when graduation is, and see how these kids, um, uh, how it affects them. They just get changed in four weeks. Their confidence level, their ability to uh, work as a team. Um, it, it's just incredible how they change, and we get, uh, we've had comments right from the beginning from parents go, you know, when, when I pick up my kid uh, after school and I say, Sally, what'd you do today? She says, oh, nothing. But when I pick her up after sailing, she bends my ear, and when I get up in the morning, she's ready to go. So, it's an entirely different thing. And of course, for Paul and David and, and everybody else on, on the team, this is what uh, gives us big juice. I love to see it because we're changing the way kids are, are doing things. And the belly biology makes them quite um, good citizens. They are understanding what their environment is too. So, um, we're real happy with this. We thank you guys for all your support, and uh, maybe we'll see you this summer. Thanks.
Thanks, Ken. Any questions or comments from the board? Uh, Jordan has his hand raised up, but.
Madam Chair, I just, just one. Um, I, I didn't see any contact information, website, so on and so forth, or, or dates uh, during the summers. Um, I, I, I didn't see that in the presentation.
Uh, it might have been hidden there, but it's long. It's borncommunityboating.org, all one word. And anything you need to know, you can learn there, more than you might want to know. On the website, there's all the registration information. We're accepting registration applications now. Um, you can sign up for the lectures. All the costs are there. Oh, just as a little side note about the cost, if you're enrolling your student, uh, your son or daughter, Born Community Boating has always offered a discount to Bourne year-round residents. And we also offer scholarships to those that have a financial need. Um, we're very happy to say, and proud actually, that we've never turned somebody away because they had, were not able to meet the financial commitment. Everybody that wants to sail, sails.
That's awesome. Thank you. Um, Melissa?
Yeah, I just wanted to applaud you. I think it's really wonderful that you're doing this work. Uh, I, you know, I know from the work I do with the community and the tribal youth that nature-based solutions really are critical, especially for youth to get them outside and to build that confidence and really teach them to respect nature and all that, that lives in this, this world. I think it's really great. And especially being on the water, I'm, I'm pretty fond of water. So, thank you. I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Thanks, Jordan. You've had your hand up. You want to speak?
Sure, thank you. Uh, yeah, great program. Anything that we can do through the schools to get your information out to them, just s- send me links and, and we'll push, we can, we can push that out um, to, to get more kids involved. That's, that's my first point. My second one is that, you know, we're trying to build our sailing program at the high school, and we've uh, recently got several, I don't know a lot about sailing. I'm a power, powerboat guy, but we, we recently got several racing sailboats donated um, that will be sitting idle all summer. Um, so if that's an, an interest to help expand your program as well, please do reach out. So if that's an interest to help expand your program as well, please do reach out.
Thanks, Jordan. John York?
David, weigh in.
John?
John?
Yes, I was gonna wait to hear what Ken had to say. So I just want to reiterate what everyone else has said. How wonderful, but also important it is to have Bourne Community Boating in our community. I can't imagine living in a world without sailors. I'm a little biased about that, but what these kids learn, when they learn to sail, is there's no equivalent anywhere. And the way it sets them up for any kind, anything they want to do, whether it's just having responsibility for others, technical fields, management fields, any nature, science, any of those things, they're learning all that at once while they're having fun and not even thinking about it. And it's really a tremendous resource. It's also, as was mentioned earlier, one of the great ways to see our town's facilities being used and residents of the town being introduced to our town facilities. The facility we have in Monument Beach is tremendous, and without a lot of different people, families who've never been around the water, all sorts of people seeing that and using it, it's not going to get, we're not going to get the bang for our dollar that we put into it. So it's just a tremendous program and really sets up the youth in our town for a lot of possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments from the board, public? So I think we're all in agreement that this is a really great program. Marlene, do you have anything you want to add to this, or is there anything you need from the board at this time, I mean, in terms of supporting the continued support of Bourne Community Boating at Monument Beach? Is there anything the board needs to do, or are we good right now for this year, anyway?
Yeah, no, I definitely, I think that we are in good standing with you folks, and it's great to know that we have the support of the board and the rest of the, or most of the town. So, but thank you for giving us the time and the space to be able to talk to you folks today.
Yeah, actually, one thing that we would like is to understand, at least I don't understand what this committee or whatever, that is looking at long-term use of the marina. Whenever that forms, we want to be part of it.
Okay, so there is on the capital plan, there is, you know, there is something on the capital plan for improvements to Monument Beach Marina and the facilities there. So I think we can, we can definitely get you guys in that conversation. I do, I, you know, I think that, I mean, as far as I can tell, the board and everyone in town really supports this program. I do know that there may be some things that we need to do to facilitate, like, long-term commitments, you know, to the program, and so I think the board needs to give that direction to the town administrator, so I don't know if she needs any kind of motion or just a consensus of the board that this is a great program and we need to do what we can to support it and for her to continue to work on those issues. Marlene, do you have anything to add?
I don't need a motion. If there's ever, you know, if the Bourne Community Boating Board ever does need to have a permanent footprint there, then we would need to talk to the select board about licensing and kind of the legal mechanism to do that appropriately through procurement. But I think going through the long-term capital plan that'll go through DNR is, it makes a lot of sense. MJ, did we lose you?
No, I actually had to connect with my plow person who's plowing my driveway, and he said he was going to let me know when he was here so we could move cars. So personal thing going. All right, so I think that this was a great presentation. Really glad to have you all here. This is a great program, and look forward to having it continue for the town of Bourne, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Next is ITAP update from SciTech. And I believe Bob Dwyer, you're the one that's going to lead this discussion?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the time on the agenda. Tonight, I want to give you a quarterly report for what we've been up to. Before I do that, I want to introduce a couple of members of our committee, as well as a couple of mentors and strong supporters for our committee. With me now is Jed Johnson, who's the vice chair of the committee. Let's see, Brian McCarter, who is another committee member. I don't see anyone else on right now, but we have two committee members who are participating in the Thalmouth Broadband Forum event tonight, so they're not able to be here. Also with us is Gene Curry, who's been one of our mentors from the beginning of setting up the committee. Gene is very active in the broadband subcommittee of the Cape Cod Technology Council. He also participates in, if I'm not mistaken, in the Mass Broadband Coalition. And you probably wear several or eight other hats regarding broadband, and I can't remember them all. Also with us tonight, I'm glad to see him, is Sean Gonsovs, who's with the Institute for Local Self-Reliance now, but many of you will remember the name. You may not recognize the face, but will remember the name as a longtime reporter, columnist, and then editor for the Cape Cod Times. I think that went on for fifteen or twenty years. I remember seeing his byline many and many a time. And he is now the internet, I should say, broadband and communications director for the Institute of Local Self-Reliance. And I'm going to rely on all of these folks to help answer all of the questions you have that I won't be able to answer. And I would like to share a screen, if I may. Let me find my PowerPoint presentation. One moment. There we go. And let me, I'm going to have to unshare this for a moment. I need to share a screen. Share a screen. Okay. Everybody should be able to see that right now. For anybody who is, well, we're not on Bourne TV tonight, but probably a recording of this will get played later on. Anybody who would like to see the full presentation, it is in the packet that is attached to the agenda for this evening's meeting on the Bourne calendar, so feel free to pull that up. In the interests of brevity, I've cut down a thirty-slide presentation down to about eight salient slides. Hang on, trying to get this to advance. Yes. The committee has talked at length about what caused us to form, and that's basically poor or problematic internet service around many of the seven villages of Bourne. This is a table that was prepared, actually, with data from Microsoft, and it's over a year old. But what I want to point out first is the column heading and the right-hand column with a twenty-five slash three. That's a download speed of a minimum of twenty-five megabits per second and an upload speed of three megabits per second. By the federal laws and regulations, anything less than that value is unserved. Anything between twenty-five slash three and a hundred slash twenty-five is underserved. Anything over a hundred slash twenty-five is now fully served. And from the data from Microsoft speed testing, if you look down the column, with only a couple of exceptions, large areas of Bourne or large percentages of the tests that were done by Microsoft show that the town is unserved. And that's a big problem, and it's going to get worse, as I'll talk about in a minute. The big problem we have in Bourne is that our incumbent, everybody is aware of Comcast, is dealing with forty-year-old infrastructure. Seventy-five oh coax cable that was put in originally to provide cable TV. Then they saw the opportunity to squeeze a little bit of internet service when everybody was doing just emails on internet. But over time, in our corroding atmosphere of salt spray and everything else, it has kind of started to degrade very rapidly. And Comcast frankly has not put any investment at all into trying to maintain the system. What they do is to put a little bit of spit and baling wire on to try to get the, keep the system going. If you, this is one example around the corner from me on Bartlett's Landing Road. I can give you about thirty other examples that are very similar all around town. And as a result, the service is terrible. We've been meeting weekly over the last four months since the committee was formed, and basically the opinion of our committee is really that fiber-based broadband service is the best way to go forward, to future-proof broadband service for all of Bourne. Not just to meet our needs right now, but to meet the needs that we're going to have to come up with in twenty years. Nobody could conceive of multiplayer online gaming twenty years ago when people were sending simple emails. Now, there are three possible ways to achieve better broadband service right now. And three options that are in play as we speak are, first Comcast, which really has fiber into Bourne, it just doesn't connect to the neighborhoods, or in individual houses. The last mile is the old coax cable, and that's where the degradation is happening. Open Cape is, has a big backbone around the Cape. They do a great job, but their service is aimed at business right now, and they're not in a position to provide universal residential service. Verizon, as many of you know, is currently installing their fiber service, FiOS, to some areas in Monument Beach and Gray Gables. Another option to provide this, which I'm not going to discuss tonight, is municipally-supplied broadband service, such as the municipal light plants that exist in about sixty towns in Massachusetts, that some of whom originally supplied electricity, some of whom were formed specifically to provide broadband. Now, these three companies, I should say, the ones that are highlighted in gold, have recently applied for what's called GAP network funding through the Mass Broadband Institute, MBI. You'll see that abbreviation. And they have been looking to get twenty million dollars to serve the unserved and underserved areas in not only Bourne, but throughout the state. We, as you recall, the select board sent letters in support of Comcast and Verizon to serve the unserved and underserved areas with a number of caveats that I won't go into. We don't know whether those, they did submit grant applications. We don't know who the winners are, and we don't know whether they are going to serve Bourne as part of their their successful bids. We think, and we have not been able to confirm, that Open Cape also submitted an application for one of these twenty-million-dollar grants. The GAP network funding is one example of government grant funding that's available in this coming year, and it's a one-time-only opportunity. If we don't find a way to access some of the grant money for the many unserved areas in town, and we think there are many more poorly-served areas and maybe reflected just in the, say, that Microsoft data, if we miss this opportunity, potentially that could fund fifty percent or more of the needs in the town of Bourne. I won't go into detail. You can read this later on, or you've read it already, but this really is a one-time-only opportunity. The one difficulty here is that the federal regulations basically look at maps that were produced by the FCC to describe exactly what the service levels in various places are. And the information for Barnstable County supplied to the FCC is that they have a hundred percent coverage, a hundred percent of the time, at the minimum level of a hundred download and twenty-five upload. For anybody who's on, who's a Comcast customer, I'm sure you beg to differ. We have problems not only with the, with service outages, we also have problems with a great decrease in in speed in the summer when all of our summer guests show up. The difficulty is, in order to challenge those maps, the municipality has to make the case that the broadband service is poor. Bourne, for instance, can submit its own data. And the committee's looked at two paths. We've basically queried every organization that might have done any speed testing in Bourne, and we're starting to assemble that. We got a huge data dump from the Mass Broadband Institute last week that we're starting to go through. We also noticed a very attractive alternative, a very cost-effective alternative that's been executed by the city of New Bedford, where their school system installed an app, a speed-testing app on the Chromebooks that students take home in the evening. And these Chromebooks, as the students use them or leave them plugged in during the evening, continually run these speed tests. And they were able to assemble a database of two thousand locations in the town and some eight thousand verified sets of speed test data for the entire city and submit them to MBI. New Bedford also used this as a basis to apply for one of these twenty-million-dollar GAP networks grants. And we've heard that MBI looked on their data very favorably and thought it was accurate, it was representative, and made a good case for their need for GAP network funding. By the way, the average that they came up with, and they're served by Comcast, is their average download speed for the entire city from eight thousand tests was less than twenty-five NBI. So the entire city shows up as unserved. Okay, this is a little complicated data, but basically I want to show here all the parts, the moving parts of this that are in play right now. Now, as I said, Verizon is installing in Gray Gables and Monument Beach. I don't know if they've actually offered that, any hookups to anybody, but we're tracking that. The second, and this is a big decision point, is that Verizon, Comcast, and maybe Open Cape are applying for the first phase of these GAP network grants. Big questions. Are those, any of those companies going to win? And do any of those actually include Bourne? If, for instance, Verizon got a GAP network grant to fill all the gaps in Bourne using FiOS, and they said they would spend the money and do that in a couple of years, then our committee basically would meet once a quarter and report back to you on how Verizon was doing with installation. You know, essentially, we'd be pretty far down the line and almost game over for any need for us to advocate for anything more. We should know that in the next few weeks. I don't know exactly when they won't, the MBI won't tell us when these are going to be announced, but it is, quote, imminent. The second big event coming up this month is that we are expecting the interim digital equity planning report from the Cape Cod Commission, who have been doing that under contract with funds provided by MBI. That is going to identify not only both gaps in connectivity, but also gaps in users. But also gaps in in users availability of having actual equipment. And and also their digital literacy, how well they know to how to use the equipment and how to effectively utilize the the internet. And that's going to be more and more important as time goes on. My personal experience is that with the large elderly population we have in town. There are some big gaps there, there's some big needs and I'm presuming the commission report is going to identify that. Now, once that report is out, MBI has stated that they are going to. Start asking for proposals for individual. Grants to hundred thousand dollar grants to individual towns who have these digital equity studies around the state. Now, that provides an opportunity. To remedy some of the gaps that have been identified in the digital planning report and I think Born is almost certain to get funding under that. Another need here is that from March to June, the town is going to need to conduct. Speed testing prior to a big other grant program called BEAD and that's. Broadband Equity. And advancement and deployment, I forget what the AD stands for, I'll be corrected by Sean immediately as soon as he gets that. That is a funding that potentially could be used. Applying for that could be used, could be one way to spend part of the hundred thousand dollar MBI grant. Another bad milestone is going to come up at the end of April. When a big program called the Affordable Connectivity Program. The subsidizing low income families and their connectivity runs out. And it's unclear whether the companies are going to continue, in other words Comcast is going to continue funding that without that federal subsidy. What will happen if that subsidy doesn't go up is that people who are on the edge, on the bubble are going to drop their internet service. So the number of unserved and underserved is going to go way up. MBI's own survey says that over a third of residents in Born who responded said that they're having trouble now. Paying their internet bills. So that is a problem that's going to grow. Potentially, there's a GAP network phase two, which we don't know much about. The big other milestone is that the any speed testing. Is going to, any new speed data can be used and it'll be in the second quarter sometime to to challenge the FCC maps. In in both Born and every place else. And we we're certain that the. The preliminary data, even that the Cape Cod Commission has assembled, is not sufficient to show the full extent of the. Served and underserved areas within the town of Born. And lastly, after that, if the challenge is accepted, then. An entity serving Born can apply for a BEAT grant. Okay, that's a big moving target, we can go back to that in a bit, I have two more slides here. These are our recommendations for what our committee should be doing right now. First, of course, is is the Digital Equity Planning Study interim report is going to come out and that needs to be reviewed and. We need to make recommendations to you, the select board, as to how to follow those recommendations. The second is, it's going to name a number of different stakeholder groups that have digital equity issues. And we think our committee should start implementing a. A program to contact these 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 stakeholder groups. To talk to them exactly about what their needs are and what they would like to see in terms of of making their access to the the digital world better. We, of course, are going to be tracking these GAP network grants as they come down. And if any of the three, if none of the three companies win a an award that actually serves Born. We're going to reverse engineer the winning proposals and identify what winning attributes got them money. The next is, we need to start looking for a way to prepare area challenges for these. For the upcoming BEAT applications. Again, ideally, using all the available data that we have and ideally supplementing that. With speed tests from middle school students taking home speed books. We've already talked to Chris Oliver and he's conceptually very interested in this program. And he, the school system, might be an entity that actually does apply for one of these hundred thousand dollar. Grants or part of it to do the testing themselves. That, of course, would. Eliminate the administrative burden on on town staff, we're acutely aware of the pressures on. On town staff as well as the town budget and we're looking for other ways to get this done. The GAP net, that hundred thousand dollar DE fund might also be used to. To fund a professional consultant to do things like what's needed down the line, a feasibility study, design study, et cetera. In a job I had before, we had a big contract with a state agency where we turned, we were the. What was called the program integrator for them and we handled all the administrative details. Of bidding contracts, letting contracts, managing contracts, writing reports, reviewing reports, et cetera. And that's something that a contractor might be able to do. If the funding can be found for it. We will, of course, continue to track the the current ISP performance in Born. But the the big opportunity, given that. Depending on where things go, is we're looking for partnerships, partnerships with other towns, partnerships maybe for public private. Partnerships with with companies who want to participate with Born or a group of municipalities. To set up a service, we have, we have heard that Thalmouth right now is evaluating. A couple of bids from private companies for such public private partnerships with their MLP. And they want to use Thalmouth as the basis from which they're going to go and spread out beyond Thalmouth and and serve adjacent towns. Okay, my last slide here mimics what we've seen before. Again, the the Digital Equities Planning Study is going to identify needs that. We think we're going to make recommendations to the select board to to follow up on. After we consult with the stakeholders. We really think that the one entity in the town or or two, maybe the school system plus the town should apply for. These digital equity grants and those will be the basically the the gateway to open up access for. Perhaps paying for the middle school home speed testing apps, which has to be done by about May thirtieth. And our, from what we've been able to tell, the New Bedford program costs less than thirty thousand dollars. So presumably Born's would be less than that if the same contractor were chosen. We need to worry about. Maybe detailed data analysis that includes stuff that's beyond the capability of us six or seven volunteers like GIS mapping. We we need to look to public private partnerships that might be able to apply for BEAT. And further down the line, feasibility studies and engineering and planning studies, which is what Thalmouth is doing right now. Cost on that order. Those are the kinds of of funds that. That typically other towns are. Are using. And with that, I'll go to the next slide here. I want to thank you all for your patience, I thank the select board members and the. Both the town staff and Cape Cod Commission staff who've been helping the committee. Also folks like the Cape Cod Technology Council, folks like Sean who are very interested. And also thanks to the many born residents who. You know, stopped me in Market Basket and and asked me and other members about, shared their comments, concerns and their suggestions about the current status of. Of internet service. And with that, I'm going to finish and just. Open it to comments and I'm going to stop sharing my screen here. So you can stare at my lovely face. Okay, Madam Chairman, I'm open for your questions, comments and.
Anne Marie, do you, you want to make a comment as a representative on this committee?
Sure, thank you, first and foremost. As as you can see, this committee is just a bunch of slackers. But they are an amazing group of individuals that certainly are passionate about bringing the best of. Of what of of internet broadband telecommunications, true to the CTEC acronym. For Born and and its residents, so. A lot of work to be done, there's a lot here to absorb, you know, seeing it firsthand as as a select board. So I think it's important that we review and and do do its diligence. As as a board to have additional conversation and talks at a future time once. Once we're able to kind of look at this and and prioritize things and see where it falls within our, you know, goals as such. Coming down the pike.
If I may interrupt, thank you Anne Marie, real quick. As I pointed out, a number of those moving parts there are going to come in for a landing here in the next few weeks and I would like to kind of. Reserve the opportunity to come back before the board when we have a little more clarity and surety about. About exactly what those those other other grant applications, et cetera, are. And and can advise you with a lot more specificity than, you know, kind of the broad gallop across the landscape that I just took.
Thank you, I I do think we're in a time right now where we are kind of. Wrapping up some things that we've been working on and trying to identify what our goals are going to be going forward. I mean, we have to identify our priorities and where our. Time and where our money is going to go, so we have to make sure that we're. You you know, but this is really helpful to understand what you're looking for so that we can. We can look at it in our discussions over the next couple of weeks. In terms of our goals and priorities for Marlene and the town. Gene, you want to, Gene, you want to add something?
Yeah, I'd like to add a couple of things, so. I started my career as an antitrust enforcer at the Federal Trade Commission. And it is literal. Antitrust one O one, that when you have a monopoly, you have higher prices and lower innovation. And that is what we see here and I think it's very, very interesting. That, I live in Gray Gables, by the way, so. On August thirty first. Open Cape announced that they were going to provide service in Buzzards Bay. Literally the next day. There were signs saying FiOS in Gray Gables and I I also chaired the Cape Cod Connect Project back in the late eighties and early nineties. When our thoughts of what was broadband were very different from what they are today. And what we what we found is that when we were able to play off one provider against another and have competition. Things moved and I think that. As we look at what is being proposed by Bob Dwyer and the other exemplary volunteers in this committee, we need to be. Aware that they're making progress and if anything, we all have seen in COVID. That in terms of education, in terms of business. It it, a robust internet is essential, it is not. It is not a luxury, it's not, we're we're just sitting around trading recipes on on a. On a on a website, it's essential for for very vital business and personal applications. And I think that we're making, just just this whole thing with Verizon is showing that we're making progress. So I want, as we consider the costs and benefits, because I understand that the the select board has to consider all of those. We keep in mind that. I think we're seeing results.
Well, thank you. All right. Well, thank you very for your very intense work and your very thorough report and. We will be like working through it and take it all under advisement. So thank you very much.
Answer your questions at any time.
Thank you. Okay, next item, Marlene, is our article review FY twenty-five capital projects.
Yes. So we do have. Three additional projects for the capital plan for the Maytown meeting. Liz can't be here tonight because she does not have power, but I do have Katie Matthews here and. The two projects that the select board heard. From the Recreation Committee and that you endorsed to move forward. Are the feasibilities, the first is the feasibility study. For a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for four locations and that was. Pocasset, Monument Beach, Keith and Clark, is that correct, Katie? Thank you. And that and the second project. Is the five hundred thousand dollars for the. Design and construction of the skate, all, excuse me, the all wheel park at the community building. And the design and the plans for reusing and repurposing the softball field. Both of those, since your select board meeting, we have taken both of those projects. To the Capital Outlay Committee where they were. Supported, the feasibility study was supported unanimously by the Capital Outlay Committee, the. All Wheel Park had one dissenting vote from the Capital Outlay Committee by a majority. So both of those projects have been through Capital Outlay. And both of those projects have also had an initial review by the. Finance Committee. We have also, or I shouldn't say we, I should say Liz and Katie have also submitted. The applications to the Community Preservation Committee to pursue CPA funds for both of those projects. So I want, wanted to just close the loop with the select board and let you know that. Those have formally now been added to the FY twenty-five capital plan.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on either of those projects? Okay, next, School Department, Jackson Field bleachers, Jordan, is Jordan still here? Hi, Jordan.
Hi, thank you very much. This request is for the design. And bid and construction oversight. For the replacement of the current home side bleachers. As well as site improvements and in addition of a pedestrian walkway to make the new bleachers accessible. We had a feasibility study completed this year that concluded while there were no apparent visual signs of failure of the existing bleacher structure. There, they did note concerns in both the build out and the design of the current structure. Most significantly that the back railing was not high enough and does not meet code. And it was Gail's opinion that the existing bleacher structure cannot be repaired and should be replaced. The request. Is for thirty thousand dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Peter?
Yes, thank you, this is something that's very long overdue. I know from me attending different different games throughout the years. That I'm no small person and I tried getting up and down those bleachers and I was struggling. And then I have elderly people who come with me and, you know, it's it's just. You know, it's not ADA compliant, you know, in the sense that you may, if someone was in a wheelchair and go up the hill, I just think that. Replacing these bleachers is a long overdue and. Should be done, you know, just just so we can have a safe, safe place to sit. When watching different born sporting events over there at Jackson Field, as well as being the overflow seating. For Born High graduation. It's just that, you know, we, they, we have to wait our turn, you know, when it comes to funding for it and. But it's it's good to see that this is moving forward and I would definitely support it.
Thank you, Jordan, is this a CPA project?
No, it doesn't, we went that route and it's not allowed under CPA.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jared?
Yeah, Jordan, so is, is this soup to nuts, um, footings, everything, and, and how far does that sidewalk reach? You, you said there was a sidewalk for, uh, access to, um, I'm just curious, is it soup to nuts, or are we able to use, reuse some of the footings, or are those uh, out of date as well? I, I would imagine they're probably out of date, but I'm just.
Yeah. It, it's on timber, timber footings, so we're looking for something obviously a little bit better, so it would be poured, uh, poured concrete, uh, foundation. Um, the walkway, you should, if, if you don't have the, uh, the report, I can definitely get that to you. Um, it, it does show you where they're going to connect when there's a pathway that goes down there already, and they're just going to cut right across at the appropriate grade up to the, the, the platform by the bleachers. There's going to be other site improvements there to make sure it's all up to code, though.
Yeah, that answers my question. I just wanted to make sure that that sidewalk, sidewalk where, or access was going to reach all the way across, and then obviously, you know, the, the footings would be included. Thank you.
Uh, Anne Marie?
Thank you. Uh, Jordan, it's just a bleacher replacement along with the necessary grading and upgrades for easier accessibility. It's not the, uh, the, the booth structure. Did you say it's on the home side?
Yeah, the, the home side. I did have them look at it, so again, if you, if you don't have the report, I can give that to you be, because I just wanted to be sure, because I knew getting into this, that this was one of those things that if you touch anything, you've got to make the whole thing compliant, and that's what we were up against. So I just wanted them to verify it. The, the, the booth is a separate structure. We do not have to touch it. They did include the cost if we wanted to do that. I don't see a need to do that at this time, but.
Okay. But that structure was looked at and reviewed by, um, or not?
Yes, no, it, it, it was.
Okay, okay.
So, could we get a copy of the report and the capital request so that we know exactly what we're looking for? Because we don't, that was not in our packet, so that would be helpful.
Yes, I'm sorry. That is, that's my fault, Jordan. I, I forgot to include both of the, I forgot to include the capital projects in your packet. I'm sorry about that.
I mean, I think we had the, we had the rec committee, well, we had the rec committee piece, but I, I don't think we had the formal application for that either, so. Um, yeah, that would be good to get those, because they're not in our book for capital, so.
Yes, I will make sure you get those.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, any other questions about this project? Seems like, um, a good one for the high school. Okay. Um.
Thank you.
Any questions from, uh, and members of the public? Well, so. Okay, um, next item is policy. Um, we have, in our packet, we have, uh, the correspondence, uh, FAQ for correspondence. It's been updated based on our last discussion. And then we have a slight change to the rules of procedure. Let's just one change, um, in one section of it. So are there any questions or comments from the board? Um, do you want us to go through this, or did everyone read it?
I'm pretty good with it, um, MJ. Uh, I feel pretty comfortable with it. I didn't really see anything that stood out. Um, obviously, it's a lot of reading, and, but we've been through it a few times, so.
I think what we tried to clarify is, um, correspondence from individuals and how that's handled versus, um, you know, that letters and emails from individuals to the select board to notify, you know, we did that. Um, there was the question of a what, if people didn't want their information, their correspondence to go in the public packet? So we had an answer of that. If, if you don't want it in the public packet, then tell us you don't want it in the public packet. Um, uh, but to understand that if it's in the, if it goes to select board as correspondence, it's public record, and if someone asks for it, it's a matter of public record. Um, and then the question of what if I want my identity redacted from the correspondence? And we said, we'll, we can, we, we're not going to redact the name and the village, um, but the street address and the phone number and the email, um, or other personal contact information will be redacted, and we do redact that as a general process on correspondence when anyone writes us and it goes in the packet. So, um, I think that pretty much answered the questions that people had. We wanted to have a FAQ, what was the other thing? And then the other thing was if, if someone wants something to go in the packet, they need to address it to the select board, the whole select board, it's to the select board, not to the chair, not to an individual. If you want it in the packet, say it's to the select board, or send it to all select board on that thing. So we try, we may have to change this in the future, but we tried to give good, um, um, explanation. And then on the, um, the only thing that we changed in the, uh, policy itself, which we had recently approved, so it's basically, uh, basically a typo in it. So, um, we clarified it to say in section eight that correspondence to an individual, uh, select board member will only be included in the packet when the select board member notifies the chair with a request, and the chair thinks it's, um, appropriate. So, um, if everyone's comfortable with the FAQ and the, um, amended rules of procedure, we could have a motion to, um, approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the FAQ and the, uh, amended rules of procedure. Motion by Jared, second by Anne Marie. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Uh, MJ votes yes, so it's unanimous, five zero zero. Okay, thank you. Um, next item is the minutes of January sixteenth, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Peter, is there a second?
Second.
Is this for the January sixteenth, right, Peter?
I will, I was not there for that one. I do believe that was my.
Yeah, that was your surgery day, right? Um, okay, so, um, so, motion in a second, um, so we'll do a roll call vote on this. Uh, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Uh, Jared?
Yes.
Uh, Peter?
Yes.
Melissa?
Abstained.
Okay, and then chair votes yes. So four, zero, one. Abstention, Melissa. Um, and then we have the minutes of January twenty third.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of January twenty first as presented.
Second.
Um, okay, motion in a second. Is there, um, any further discussion? And I think Jared and Peter were excused, were abs, were excused from this meeting, so.
Correct.
Yep.
Melissa, did you say the twenty first or twenty third?
Twenty third. I'm sorry, I might have said the twenty first, but it's the twenty third.
Twenty third.
All right, uh, motion is second, uh, it's a roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Uh, Jared?
Abstention.
Peter?
Abstention.
Melissa?
Yes.
And chair votes yes, so it's three, zero, two. Uh, next thing is committee reports. We don't have any committee reports. Okay, I will, um, just, uh, note, um, for the select board that, um, uh, Senator Sue Moran has, um, uh, put together stakeholder meetings for the staff, MassDOT, um, before pre-construction of the Bourne Rotary, um, and the first one was held, um, this week. And, um, it was a good discussion. There were people from the schools there, uh, Chief ESIP was there, talked about a lot of, um, the logistics and how they're going to plan the logistics. And we did have a discussion, um, as part of that, about some of the questions about pre-marking and notifying people which lane they're supposed to be in before they even get on the bridge. So, um, they did take that feedback and they'll be working on that, so, um, I think that'll be helpful.
MJ, by my, those open to the public, I would imagine I would be able.
No, it's a staff meeting, and I just go as chair representing the board, so, um, there's, um, the, so it's the senator, it's, um, mostly staff and the MassDOT people, Lawrence Lynch was there, and, um, they, they really talk logistics. Like Roger Forget was like, you know, we're having MCAS in, in March, are we going to have any problems with getting kids to school? And so we were able, um, in the other ones to sort of make plans around school transportation and other, and really logistical things around the project, so.
Okay, I didn't see any invites for that, so that's why.
No, it was, it's really a staff thing that just the Sue Moran does, and she did it for the fall, um, fall bridge work. And, um, I went to a couple, but mostly it was just staff that did them. And, uh, now, okay, uh, correspondence.
Thank you. Select board correspondence for February thirteenth, twenty twenty four. A Department of Environmental Protection letter, explanation of the differences for the OXIN and PFAS at landfill. B Department of Environmental Protection letter, Plan for Department of Defense Property Munitions Response Site at Old Grenade Courts. C Joint Base Cape Cod, February public meeting calendar. D Association to Preserve Cape Cod Support Letter for Section forty-five in Governor Healy's Fiscal Year twenty-five budget. E Xfinity Annual Notice, additional annual notice information located on select board's webpage. F Upper Cape Budget Subcommittee Meeting Minutes of January second, twenty twenty-four. And G Census Bureau Letter Conducting Boundary and Annexation Survey.
Thank you. Uh, next item is future agenda items. Um, I am planning on sending out to the board, um, sort of the list of what we're doing over March and early, and it's going into April, what I have is laid out. I was going to send it this afternoon, but, um, the email was down, so it'll have to go out tomorrow. Just so you have an idea, we dare, um, did reschedule some of the things that we were doing tonight to future meetings, so you'll have an idea of what we're doing with that. And, uh, our next meeting dates, we have February twentieth, uh, twenty-seventh will be sewer commissioners, the fifth of March, there's no meeting for election day, and the twelfth and nineteenth are select board. So, um, in that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jared, second by Anne Marie. Is there any further discussion? Call in favor? Oh, I have to roll call. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes. Thank you very much. Have a great.